Got a notice on your screen, folks.
Here you go, it's being recorded.
Okay, at this time, I'll turn over the meeting to Bob Pento, our superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Palano. Good morning, everybody. We have twenty-three people logged into our Zoom meeting this morning for our Board of Education work session on the topic of our reopening of school task force for September. I'd like to begin this morning by thanking the Board of Education for their continued support and leadership through this time. These navigating these past several months have been, as people have said commonly at this point, unprecedented. But this meeting this morning and the work that has preceded it and that will follow represents a real team effort of members of the Board of Education, our central office leaders, our leadership team, our teaching staff, our support staff, including our clerical, food service custodial, and other groups, as well as our community. We really know that the work that we're doing today will help us to make decisions for a very uncertain time for September. The effort of this group has been to examine and research, to the greatest extent possible, the best means by which to open school in September. We are looking for solutions, and the solutions that we're looking for, as we said, are addressing an unprecedented situation with a great deal of unknowns. We realize that no solution is going to be perfect. As much as we would like it to be, no solution will be perfect, and each one of them represent compromises that will have to be made. We are told that the state is going to require a reopening plan to be submitted to the State Education Department at some point in July. The members of this group and the community may have read a news day that the deadline for that plan is July fifteenth. There is still an uncertainty surrounding that deadline, given the fact that the New York State Education Department is slated to provide guidance to schools for reopening on July thirteenth. So our belief is that July fifteenth will likely not be the date. However, the work that we're doing and will continue to do between now and then will put us in a very good spot if needed to submit a plan at that time. We also understand that some of the solutions that are going to be and ideas that are represented today may represent very different ways of operating at schools. And we have a variety of groups within our schools that have collective bargaining agreements. We know that some of those are going to have to be looked at, and we're going to have to have conversations and agreements moving forward, all for the benefit of our kids. We look at this morning's report out as one where people are sharing ideas and not necessarily looking at the specific logistics at this point, but just trying to figure out ways to make the educational experience for our children and ensuring their safety as well as the safety of our staff, making sure that it is as good as it can be under a series of scenarios. We also realize as we're doing this work that some of the things that we will have to look at in the fall will mean that some will have to surrender some autonomy. In other words, we may have to have some practices as a school community and as a program that doesn't have quite as much flexibility as it might have because we need to be sure that we're ready for an opening in September. That can look very different. Basically, we're looking at three different models of opening in the fall, three scenarios. First, a scenario in which all students will report and come back to school. This is what we hope for. This is what we are designed to do. And one of those, part of that scenario would be that students come back to school in September, they go to their classes as they always have, and at the end of the day, they go home and hopefully have activities after school. We also know that nothing is going to change in terms of our health crisis that would say that we don't need to take serious precautions if that were the case. So one of the scenarios that we'll look at today is if all of our students would be permitted and able to come back to school in September and in classes, what are some of the precautions? Face masks, cleaning regimens, hand sanitizer, et cetera, that should be in place and must be in place to ensure student and staff safety. But we're also looking creatively, excuse me, as if all of our students return and we need greater precautions than just students going to regular classrooms. Our advisory group in this area has looked at different ways of organizing students, and some of that work will come through when I ask the principals in just a couple of minutes to go through some of the schedules that we're looking at for the fall that can help to identify that. So scenario one is that all of our students will return to school in September, perhaps under different circumstances. Scenario two is looking at a hybrid approach. In other words, a portion of our students will return to school each day or possibly each week or possibly at different times. And that generally is seen as half of the kids are at one point and half of the kids are coming at another point. It has a whole series of logistical challenges associated with it, both for home and for school. However, we're exploring those options and will share some of those schedules and implications today as well. And finally, the third scenario is that the health crisis does not allow students to return to school, and that would then have us look more carefully at our digital learning plans to ensure that they robustly support the learning of our students. So we look at these three scenarios through the lens of four advisory groups. One of them deals with health and safety as well as the needs of special students, the special needs of some of our students and programs. Secondly, we look at our facilities. Third, we'll look at our curriculum and instruction. And finally, through the lens of our technology infrastructure. Each one of these areas is led as an advisory group by one of our central office leaders, and they will report out shortly. And I will ask each of those leaders to screen share some of the summary documents that you've been working on to help assist those who are following along, keep track of the work that you're doing. We do plan to share out those materials after our meeting this morning, and I thank our leaders and groups for putting that together. Before we get to those reports, I will be asking the principals to share the ideas that we are developing as to how to structure our school day in September so we can start to get a sense of the different settings upon which our students may return and staff may return to school in September. And then finally, before we finish today, we'll do the schedules of the principals. We will then have our advisory committee reports, and then we'll share some reflections, including the important goal of including a parent voice in this process. We'll talk about that before we leave this morning. I do want to thank everybody on the Zoom this morning for your hard work and for your time here this morning. It is greatly appreciated as well as thanking you for the work that lies ahead. It is considerable. So at this time, I would like to, Mr. Palano, if it's okay, I'd like to then pivot to the next item, which is the updated information from BOSI's and the New York State Education Department. Again, simply reminding everybody that while July fifteenth has appeared in Newsday and in other publications as the deadline for this plan that has not yet been finalized, however, we are confident that we will be ready either way. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to our principals to talk about the schedules, possibilities for the fall. I'd like to start with Dr. Boland. And Jim, if you could share with us some of the ideas that you've developed, and we'll then transition to our elementary program following that. Thank you, Jim.
Sure, no problem. Good morning, everyone. So I'm sharing my screen and sort of in accordance with what Bob was speaking about, taking a look at three, three general categories, school open for one hundred percent, a hybrid reduced model, and then an online-only model. And I think what's important for the junior, senior high school building is one thing to understand that if social distancing guidelines of remaining six feet apart and wearing masks is something that we need to adhere to, our school open models don't work. We do not have the capacity to have socially distanced six feet in classrooms using all the available space that we have. We would not be able to be in a one hundred percent model, so we would automatically have to go to a hybrid or reduced occupancy model. However, I did want to include some information about our scheduling options to have a school, a school open with one hundred percent because we're still not sure that we will have to be held to those six-foot requirements. And so therefore, obviously, our first choice would be a hundred percent attendance with a shared standard, our standard schedule. Some of the things that we would do to help limit mobility and interactions, no use of lockers, unidirectional hallways. Again, our issue is that we have, on average, anywhere between twenty-four and twenty-eight students per classroom. Again, the CDC has guidelines, not necessarily rules, and we're waiting to hear from the state on any other changes with social distance requirements. So that would be standard opening. Another way that we could try to do it to maintain a hundred percent is to have a split schedule, and that would be a twelve-period day where we would have students, grade seven through nine, be on a period one to nine schedule, and then students' grades ten to twelve be on a period four to twelve schedule. We wouldn't be able to do safe distancing measures in the classrooms, but we would have a reduced occupancy at certain times during, during the day. The overlap periods are lunch periods, and we could do something where we would be able to set up the cafeteria in the new gym, which would allow for the use of cafeteria space for some classroom spaces during that time when we have reduced people in the building. So either in the, in the, when there's that overlap between periods four and eight, when we would have lunch periods, we're able to kind of do a little bit of movement throughout the building. Cafeterias and library space could be used for larger classes that need more distancing. We would need to get, put together a new master schedule, and students would be able to use alternative spaces where lessons could be done via webcam. So again, we'd be able to split some of the class sizes, be able to have some students in one area where one teacher was teaching in the room with half the class, and be able to use a webcam to be able to broadcast to other areas. Our third choice, again, these are ranked in, in order of preference, a third choice would then to do something along a block schedule where we would have period one to four one day and then period five to nine on the next day. We would increase the amount of time per period. One of the problems with this is that it, it is more dense because students would be in a room more than forty minutes. But what we would do is it does reduce mobility in the building, only having students in from periods one to four and then an activity club period, period five, and then the next day, periods five to nine. And again, that would be if we could try and get everybody in without the six-foot distancing requirements. If we do have to have six-foot distancing requirements, you can see, our first choice would be to do something as an A-one, B-one day. Our seven through nine would be on an A schedule, A-one and A-two, and our ten through twelve would be on a B-one, B-two schedule. Basically, what that means is because we have classes that meet every other day, the, the, the one and two would be the every other day, and the A would be the grade level. So for instance, Monday, Tuesday, we might have, on Monday, we would have grades seven through nine in for A-one, which is their full nine-period day. Then on Tuesday, we would have ten through twelve in for B-twelve, for ten through twelve on B-one. The next day would be A-two schedule, which would be any of the even classes that students may have had, seven through nine, and then again, following with ten through twelve on a B-two day on that Thursday. The great thing about this is that it's not, it's not only two days a week. It's every other day that students are in. So some days, they'd be in for three days, some days, they'd be in for two days. When they're not in the building, instead of synchronous offline learning, synchronous, instead of synchronous learning, they would be doing work at home on a project-based learning kind of operation so that when they're in the classroom, they'd be getting work and lessons and things they would need from the teachers. The day that they're not in the building, they'd be doing that work at home, and then the next day, they'd be in talking about that work. So it does provide the students a quick and or a consistent connection with their, with their classroom teachers. If that does not work and we need to do some kind of other variation because of cleaning regimens or whatever that may be, our choice would be then AA and closed on a Wednesday and then BB or any other version of that. Again, it's similar to choice one that you see with the A-one, B-one, but it includes, if needed, a cleaning day in the middle. Our virtual model, again, if we were to have to be off, out of the building again in the fall, our choice would be a modified block schedule, periods one to four on one day and then periods five to nine on another day, about a one-hour time in each session, and you would follow your bell schedule. There's no face time for people in classes. We need to provide online teaching essentials for our staff in order to talk about how we do distance learning in a non-emergency mode. We would follow the bell schedule, and we would need to talk a little bit about what that means in terms of attendance, where we would want to speak with parents and talk about the, how important it is for those students to be able to be in those sessions that they have following a regular school day like they would. The second choice would be virtual for secondary and socially distant for the elementarys and the high school, but I think the elementary principals will be able to talk a little bit more about those plans. So that's what we have as, as a potential right now for different options within the secondary building.
And for everyone's benefit, I appreciate Dr. Boland, your, the pace that you're taking. I know that everyone in the room, it's a brisk pace of how we're moving through this. The purpose today is to share this out. We'll share out the materials. I know that there will be many questions, and there may be some now, but there'll be many questions about each and every one of these. But we also want to keep in mind that we have other models and reports that we, that we'll be doing this morning. So I appreciate that, that brisk pace. And I know that every one of those things that you mentioned so quickly has a whole series of, of consequences and implications to them. So we're not going over them quickly in a sense of saying that they're simple, but they are, they, each one of them has their own complexities to it.
Right.
Thank you for that, Jim.
Sure.
Okay, I'm gonna move to the elementary folks. Allison, I believe you're starting, and if, if the three elementary principals could just continue, that'd be great, and then we'll see where we're at after that. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, everyone. So I'm gonna just quickly try to share my screen. Okay. So, you know, we're gonna be sharing our ideas, you know, beginning with the least restrictive to the most restrictive, similar to Dr. Boland. So if, you know, we're fortunate enough to come back, you know, with a hundred percent attendance, we would still be limiting building, you know, our mobility. And the, you know, it's easier on the elementary side because we can keep children in the classroom with their teacher for the bulk of the day. There isn't that movement necessarily that we have at the junior or senior high. We would be using a traditional master schedule that we typically prepare every summer, which just involves our lunch recess schedule, our special area cluster, you know, you know, encore programming. We might decide in this model in terms of, you know, even though we would not need the six-feet physical distance requirement in this model, what we may still decide to keep our special area encore programming in a push-in version. We still might decide in this model to have lunch in classrooms. But, you know, for the most part, this first model is we come back and we don't need that to keep that physical distancing piece. You know, in each of these, we have this area about, you know, needing to wear masks and hygiene lessons ongoing. I think that's pretty self-explanatory that, you know, in terms of the hygiene piece, that would happen regardless of the model. And in terms of wearing masks, we'll obviously be directed on that. And so that's just, you know, pretty much the traditional opening with maybe a few different, you know, variations in terms of the, you know, the special area component. Choice two is also a hundred percent attendance, and in this model, we would go into small groups or cohorts, which we're imagining would be half classes. So we, we feel that our buildings are big enough, and we've, in our preliminary review, believed that we have enough spaces around, within our buildings to accommodate half classes. So that means using our special area classes, our large space gathering rooms, libraries, et cetera, to bring half classes of children. So in this model, we would, this is the model where we would need to continue the six-foot physical distancing that would still be required. So all spaces would be utilized. Classroom teachers would be responsible for all the instruction, and we would be considering a possible live stream into the secondary location for our, for the other half class, which would be supervised by another staff member. And the teachers would be doing the moving in this model, whereas the children would be staying within those cohorts or half classes. We would have a split day schedule, and that, there would be the instructional component to the day where the classroom teacher would be providing all of those lessons, the guided work, the one-on-one conferring that we value. And then in the second half of the day, which could be the morning for some groups, right, and the afternoon for others, would be that time of day where independent practice would happen, independent reading, project work, assignments, and so on. We would be building in this model a very dynamic schedule with rotations for our special area teachers. They would be needed in this model to supervise those half classes. But we would be able to build into the schedule the opportunity for the delivery of the program. So for example, if I have a, you know, we have a PE teacher who's supervising half of a fourth-grade class, let's say, for half the day, we would build in a, you know, a forty-minute period for that special area class, whether it be music, art, plus PE, and so on, so that the children would get that programming in a rotating way, obviously not as frequently as they would in the traditional model. So again, in this model, children stay in their locations. We would be providing a recess period where we would be using all of our exterior spaces and ensuring, again, the six-feet requirements for physical distancing. But we do imagine lunch happening within those half cohort groups and those locations, so we'd have to arrange for that schedule as well. And, you know, I, we, I continue to put the, you know, ongoing hygiene lessons will be necessary because obviously that will be an important piece. Considerations and limitations for this option, furniture, you know, you know, we haven't really had the opportunity to do a full inventory in our buildings, but from what we believe at this point, Lloyd Harbor and West Side may have enough of the furniture. Definitely at Goose Hill, we would need to purchase additional furniture to be able to spread children apart. You know, most of the, the tables at Goose Hill, I would imagine, are, I think they're five feet in length, so they wouldn't, none of those, those would work. So we'd have to purchase desks and chairs for the primary grades. And we also have to look at the shared staff component because, you know, many of our special area encore teachers move around, so we would have to decide and sort of, you know, delineate certain buildings for those staff members as opposed to the traveling. Unless we came up with some way of having them travel, but I think initially, our initial feeling is that we would need to have them get home bases, so to speak, rather than moving around the three buildings. And the biggest concern or limitation is that in this model, we would need to increase staffing for each building, and we're not exactly sure exactly how many staff members at this point. You know, I don't, you know, but we would definitely need to make that increase. So those are the two models that I was presenting. I know that Valerie, you were gonna go into the hybrids. Do you want me to stop sharing? And then you reshare, or should I just?
No, you can stop sharing this way. I can control it.
Sure.
Perfect, okay. All right. Thank you, Allison. Good morning, everybody. So let me screen share, and it will help us. We're using the same document, which is why Allison asked if we should just continue scrolling, but I, I think I'm better off like this. So here's what Allison just spoke about. Lynn Herschlein and I are going to speak about what we're referring to as a hybrid model, which would be, we would be bringing in half the students at any given time. So the first hybrid model I'm going to review with you is the possibility of an A-day, B-day, very similar to what Dr. Boland presented, but being that it's at the elementary, it would look slightly different. So A-day, B-day just refers to two different groups of students. As he said, it would be like an A-one, A-two, A-three with rotating encores. A-day would be, let's say, the, we'll call it for now, first half of the students would come in, and on the next day, the other half of the students would come in. What would be the limitations of such a model? The children would be split into two groups. We would work that out. However, that would, you know, be alphabetical, grade levels would not be a possibility, but again, we would work that out. The core classrooms, different than Ms. Hazut's model where we would be utilizing all of the space for core instruction, core classrooms would be used for core instruction because it would be about twelve to thirteen children per classroom, and we would be able to maintain the six-foot distance. Lunch and recess would have to be considered. Lunch would possibly be in the classroom. Recess, we would have to make decisions on. The encore classes, and I have a, our page breaks are odd now. I'm just gonna hit a few returns here so you can see them at the bottom. So when we talk about the encores, which are the special area subjects, we could do something similar to what we do now, rotate in the encores. This little example that I put here shows a child is in core class, then goes to phys ed, whatever that might look like. Lunch and recess, again, we have to make some decisions, back to core and then to music, although another option would be to maximize core instruction and have only one encore a day. Now, to go back up to here, it relates to, well, what would happen on the DLP day, the Digital Learning Plan Day? We would also do some project-based learning since the teacher would be instructing the other half of the class at that time. And another idea would be to put the encores on the Digital Learning Plan Day, and that would go to my example below. Rather than have two encores here, we could have one encore here, over here instead of the two, one encore here, and again, put the majority of the encores with some core project-based learning on the opposite day when the child is home. So a pretty straightforward model, but again, we would have to make some decisions and work out some of the other limitations that we will consider. So I'm going to pass it to Ms. Herschline, who's going to share yet another possibility for a hybrid. And Lynn, yeah?
Will you leave the document up for me?
Sure, certainly.
Thank you.
Okay, so here, now, this is choice two. In no particular order, we just put our thoughts on page.
Right. So in this model, again, it's reduced occupancy, so we'd have approximately half classes in school. But in this model, we would have them in the morning, afternoon, you know, harkens back to the split-session days of kindergarten on years past, where half the class would come to school between eight-thirty and eleven-fifteen. These are approximate times. We'd have approximately ninety minutes between sessions to allow for transportation of the morning group home and then picking up the afternoon group to bring them to school. That ninety minutes would, we believe that would be sufficient to do that amount of transporting, and it would allow the teacher to have the lunch and preparation period so that she's not away from students during that time. What we would envision that the encore special area classes would happen in the, in the afternoon if the child were in school in the morning. So when they're at home, they would get their one or two special area classes virtually. The benefits of the daily, this would be students coming to school, school daily, albeit half the time. Certainly the benefits are that there's daily contact with their teacher. There's a daily routine at home, so there's no off day, for example. Families, you know, get into a regular daily school routine. The teachers would provide all the instructions and materials, setting the students up for the off, not the at-home session. The time that they're home, they would have already received instructions and materials and could be completing their work, their projects, and then the very next day, they have that time to process and debrief with their teacher and move, move forward in that, in that routine. We would not have to provide lunch and recess in school. They would have lunch and recess, you know, break time at home, so that eliminates those complications. The ninety minutes, we believe, would suffice in terms of cleaning, deep cleaning between sessions. It may require a little additional custodial staff, but we believe that could be done during the ninety minutes. The complications arise in terms of four daily bus runs. There's an increased cost associated with this likely. There's a double the number of daily transitions, so when you're talking about moving large groups of students twice during, four times during the day, there definitely would be a need for increased security and traffic con- there definitely would be a need for increased security and traffic control and supervision as we're having pickups and drop-offs and buses coming and going. And it may require that we stagger the building schedules. Depends on the buses and the capacity and the numbers of students availing themselves of transportation. So it has the benefits of students coming to school daily, continuous contact, the encore sessions on the off time when they're at home. But there are certainly complications with regard, especially with regard to transportation. Okay, Mrs. Hazut, are you going to share the, all virtual?
Right. And let me go back to sharing. Okay. So the last option is, you know, if we can't come back to school, children can't return back to school and we needed to be 100% in a remote learning situation. I think the biggest difference that we talked about was creating this master schedule from the beginning. Whereas, you know, obviously we were building the plane as we were flying it, you know, the last, over the last few months in terms of, we had those phases of the DLP. I think our hope would be that we would create a master schedule that included our, you know, PPS, our services, our special area encore programming from the beginning so that families understood the schedule from the beginning. I think that the biggest, you know, challenge in this is going to be the balancing of screen, you know, Zoom time with authentic learning experiences. And I think, you know, as we start to now be reflecting about our DLP and, and the, the challenges and the, and the, certainly the positives of that plan, we definitely would need to be thinking about that for all age groups, you know, moving forward. While we were, we did get Chromebooks in the hands of every child who needed it. And this, for next year, if we're remote learning 100%, we'll really need to be thinking about packaging materials over the summer. High-interest accessible books for kids, you know, individualized, you know, bags for kids, which would also include math manipulatives, their workbook, for example, headphones for the Chromebook. So we would want to make sure that they were really set up at home to, to have rich educational experiences. Obviously the limitations, you know, it does not allow for in-person learning experiences. The social and emotional learning will continue to be, you know, somewhat challenging. And in terms of summer curricular planning, I think we're going to, we would have to, and I know this will come through in the other, you know, reports. We'd have to look at our scope and sequence and, you know, look at the, look at, look at that much more intensely if we're going to have a remote, another, you know, several months of remote learning. So that's pretty much, and do you guys want to add anything in that I didn't share on that?
Allison, Valerie, and Lynn, thank you so much. You know, those summaries of the schedules really help us to start envisioning the logistics of what this can actually look like for our students. And so we see them sort of in these neat boxes. My compliments to everybody's use of Microsoft Word or Google Docs, whatever it might be. Everything looks so neat, option one, option two, et cetera. And as educators and as planners, that's what we wanted to be. But the reality that we all know is that we could very well start the year with option one of everybody's chart. And then we could, with very little notice, end up being with option three. And that might last a time. And then we may go to option two. And that's one of the things that we've all seen in our world and our communities and different organizations, that you must be able to adapt quickly. So our approach towards this is to plan for all of these scenarios, to make sure that all of the components of curriculum and resources, et cetera, are in place so that if we start the year in person every day, but we need to transition to a situation where kids are more separated or need to be home for a time, that we are ready to do that. And so I appreciate the principal sharing those schedules. The other thing I'd say is that option one and option two, sometimes in some cases may also be able to be blended a little bit, you know. So we're looking at a situation where everybody is in school or half the kids are in school. We'll also look at, as we go through the logistics, is it possible to get a little bit more than half of the students in school using those spaces? So that students are in school as often as possible. So we appreciate that great thinking on the part of our principals as they think about their buildings and our programs and how best to deliver them in these different scenarios. At this time, I'd like to transition to our advisory group reports. And thinking in terms of priority, while all of these are critical, important considerations, we thought it would be important to start with health and safety. So, and thinking about those things that we have to ensure that our kids and staff are going to be safe when they return to school and make sure we're communicating everything throughout the process. So Ms. Campbell, could I turn it over to you, please? And then when you're, when you're done, if you could turn it over to Mr. Stuccio and then Mr. Simon and then Mr. Monastero. And of course, if the board or anyone has questions, please feel free to let us know. Denise?
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. I'm going to do two or three of the objectives and Lynn Shally was kind enough to join us from the advisory group and she'll present to the objectives as well. So health and wellness is the broader scope of what we're working on. The first objective is about establishing the baseline health criteria for students and staff to be able to safely report to work. Of course, actually, let me back up for one second because one of the threads that we, all the committees knew was going to be important was the idea of communication to all constituents. So the concept you'll hear, and you'll hear the other advisory chairs report as well, would be that this work that everyone is doing now will culminate in having documents available for staff in the form of an employee resource guide. So a lot of the things that we're mentioning that needs to be created will be compiled in a way that can all be shared out. And of course, we envision an opening, a superintendent's conference of some sort where there's a, there's a training procedure where everyone is familiarized with the new building procedures, et cetera. So this, the documents will support the new way of, of life as we will reopen. So that's going to be the same to be true for students where there's a lot of things that we need to build a new set of communication tools so that students are aware of the reentry plan. Some of those things may happen weeks in advance of school opening. Some of those items may happen once the opening plan is announced by the state and the local districts. So building tools for the students is, is a part of this thread as well as parent communication, which is very important. So one of the ideas that we talked about is a central point of communication for parents specific to the issues related to all the things that all of us are discussing. So it would likely be on the website, there'll be a very clear area for parents. And we'll start to look to changing behavior to draw our parents to where, where those things are located by maybe sending out a school messenger, please see an important update on the website under this section. And so when we mention through our advisory groups right now, communication, those are going to be the, the avenues of where that information is going to be contained all the way through. So I'll go back now to this first objective, which addresses the entry requirements, which again, you'd find in the employee resource guide, but they'll include the requirements for face masks. They will be provided for staff, certainly staff may use their own as long as they meet the requirements. Taking temperature daily.
Denise? Could I ask you, I don't know if everybody else, but could you re-put it up? Because on my screen, it's like a small thing and a bunch of others with a bunch of documents. Maybe nobody else has it that way. Great. Thank you.
Okay. Yep, sorry about that.
No problem.
I had two screens. I moved it. I thought it, I thought it would automatically follow me. So the taking temperature daily and answering the three New York State mandatory health screening questions will be a part of it. What we would likely do, this would be a self-reporting system on an established app or Google Form where staff would be required to take their temperature daily, report that and answer the screening questions. We would also have a self-service station available in each building for those staff members who forgot to take their temperature. And of course, for visitors that would be entering the building, they would need to take their temperature, answer the questions and record that data. And the requirements as they currently stand would be, would be enforced according to DOH guidelines. A lot of these things also, I should say, are going to come from state and DOH guidelines. These are not necessarily choices and options for discussion. Some of these things are going to be mandated. So as we get further guidance, these things will be very, you know, clearly delineated. Visitors, of course, our main goal would be to, all nonessential business should not be scheduled in the buildings. Visitors should be decreased for all reasons. We should have signage to support that, that visitor, if a visitor should show up, they must go back to their car, call for the, for their designated purposes if they're not expected. We realize that at times, of course, parents may need to come to the building, pick up their children, et cetera. They will be required to follow those procedures, include a cell number because we will be responsible for contact tracing. So when they sign in, our new sign-in procedures will be enhanced to make sure that we have the information that we need. We need a reporting system for faculty and staff regarding COVID results, whether they're positive, whether they've been advised by the DOH to self-quarantine, if they've been in contact with someone. All of this information will be set up for, in the employee resource guide, as well as a reporting system for when those situations will occur to some of our staff and our family members. There's also going to be return-to-work guidelines. So if you are sick for a certain amount of days, what are the requirements that the DOH is providing as guidelines? When is it safe for you to return to work? All of those documents will be shared with staff as a part of their informational training. Internal record keeping to support all the contact tracing requirements will be put together because again, we're required to do that and hand it over to DOH should the need arise. Making accommodations to the health offices. So each of the nurses are looking at their space. We realize that well area and a sick area need to be created, similar to what many of us have seen in pediatricians' offices in the years, over the years. Waiting and seating areas will be clearly marked so that there's not a lot of, you know, every goal to decrease traffic and mobility. Increasing, I mean, most teachers at this point have, you know, a couple Band-Aids in their drawer, things that they could provide for students. But we need to enhance what that looks like to decrease the amount of times children need to go to the health office for nonessential items. We also have discussed the idea that supervision permitting. It may be that the nurse gets called to classrooms, does a quick conference outside the classroom door to address whatever complaint might be that the teacher's uncomfortable treating or discussing with the student. And then she can get the, the student back into the class without increasing hallway behavior or cross-contact across classes and in the nurse's office with other students. We certainly want the health office reserved at this point for children who are sick and, and the pickup procedures will be worked on. The student information guide that I referenced before, this we would see across K through 12 in ways that we have to communicate with students, the new changes. We, we make a note here, you know, we want these to be obviously developmentally appropriate materials where possible. Could we, could we make small videos that we could share with, with students? How to, whatever those mask requirements are going to be, the safe distancing rules, once they're defined, we'd be able to memorialize that in writing and/or through videos, depending on the age again, to highlight all that information that the students need to know. Many of our students are going, we, the second, next objective is the SEL, which, which will cover some of this, but we know that many of the students are going to be anxious, things that aren't going to look and feel the way they usually do. We're going to need to highlight what those changes in building procedures are. You know, if the principals change arrival and dismissal or the lunch, et cetera. We're going to have to communicate that well in advance of the students actually entering the building to help ease the transition. Parent communication, which I mentioned, but specifically under this domain, we will make sure that the parents have frequent reminders of the guidelines for keeping your children home, both COVID and non-COVID-related issues, updates from the New York State on the vaccination and the physical requirement schedule. They're slowly coming out now, but this will be, this will be important. We have many students who are still under a slowed vaccination schedule, as it were. And obviously, many of them had trouble getting appointments in the last couple of months. There's a little bit of a backup. We're unsure at this point if the state is going to extend traditional regulations and timelines on the vaccination schedule. But of course, we'll keep parents up to speed as soon as that information becomes available to us. In advance of student, of school opening, in whatever format we're going to open, contacting parents of students who potentially are identified as high risk and reviewing with family to ensure that we have current recommendations from the treating physician or identified. Of course, we could always consult with our own school physician with matters of medical uncertainty, whether or not they, you know, they're safe to be in school or not. We need to clarify the pickup procedures for the timely pickup of ill children. We updated our demographic information last week. If, for those of you who saw those emails for, when you, when the parents logged on to see their child's report card, we asked for an updated demographic system, tried to capture the cell phones, emergency contacts. You know, you can imagine many people, you know, grandma comes and gets them when they're sick. They might not be on the list this year. So we need to clean that up a little bit so we don't have prolonged. If we do have children that get sick, we can't have prolonged time for them to sit around the building waiting for people to pick them up. A lot of ours are very similarly noted, whether they're hybrid or virtual. So there's, most of these that we've discussed could go across all three schedule types that the principals have outlined. But, you know, with one or two variations, depending on if we didn't open at all. The second objective was really about addressing the social and emotional reentry needs of all the students. Before opening, well, I should share with you each building before we close, with the support of the principals and the mental health staff, identified students that they were concerned with, whether they were doing really well on virtual and don't have any intention of ever coming back to school because it works so well for them. Or the flip side, we're really struggling and the idea of not opening. And if we don't open, you know, how troublesome that will be for some people. So using those lists to help us, once we have the reopening model defined, reaching out to those students. Everyone is prepared to do that, once we know what that plan is, to kind of walk some of those more, children more, you know, more closely affected by these things, we'll walk them through that. The PPS will do that summer outreach. The communication systems regarding the reentry transition system, again, we'll go through all those, the avenues that we talked about. And we need to have a support plan to continue to monitor the high-risk transition students based on some of those anxiety and, and issues. We have a, some wellness resources that we'll be prepared to share virtually and in other ways. These wellness resources will be helpful to the adults for self-care. They'll be helpful for the students and they'll also be helpful for our adults to have all the teachers and other staff in the building to be able to work with students through some of those things. And so the building that resource guide, we thought would be something important. Having a welcome back week of sorts to try to acknowledge, you know, where we've been with the closure, finding a way to maybe celebrate the moment since we've last seen each other. These are things that can be collected in advance of school opening. Carryover activities and conversations with the previous teacher. It could be something short and sweet as a message from last year's teacher to welcome them back and introduce the new teacher. It could be pre-recorded, it could be a Zoom. Some people are talking about possibly even reporting to last year's classroom first and maybe having a little bit of a goodbye in that room. Again, depending on the ages, these are things that at the building level, we may make different considerations for the developmental, would be a little challenging probably with the older kids to run through their bell schedule. But the, with the younger kids, there may be something that we could do and the closure would be very important for them. The PPS staff is going to, is prepared to prepare a guide of talking points, read aloud suggestions, teachable moments for that first day or two back to be able to help, to help give the teachers a toolbox of how they in turn can handle some of these SEL needs for students. We have some support materials from Castle, which is a great resource that we'll be putting in the employee guide. We think it's very important that there's direct instruction on COVID. So there's a lot of stigmas associated with this. There continue to be. Children at all ages are a little confused about what it is, where it came from. And we think it's, it's critical to provide that instruction of how we're keeping them safe about what the virus is. And again, developmentally appropriate lessons at different ages to be able to expand, to be able to expand upon on the cognitive side of what COVID is. But the, you know, there are certainly children who have experienced loss related to COVID in their, in their families or in their neighborhoods. That needs to be addressed differently. There are people who are treating this a little bit more casually, understanding respect for those differences, that some people are more strictly adhering to things. We, we're hearing from our parents in some of the focus meetings that we've had, a little bit of peer pressure of not knowing kind of when they're comfortable branching out a little bit. Some are letting their children socialize, some aren't, and that creates a lot of confusion for the kids. So we think a couple of lessons really need to be directly put in front of the students to be able to support that in, in the environment. There's also thought about considering pairings and sort of like a mentor type of relationship or an advisory at the middle school so that, that people are connected to students, that if we wind up with an ongoing intermittent attendance issue, that's a, that's a big issue to be able to make sure that we're kind of keeping track of our kids. We know that we've had families and teachers report. Principals were helping to track down students that maybe missed a couple of Zooms. Is everything okay? All of that, that check-in? But if this is going to be a year of persistent interruption, we could see how things could fall through the cracks. So we thought it'd be important to set up a little bit of a system to ensure that that doesn't happen. Monitoring student attendance across all three environments is important. We believe it's important to give a guidance document to the teachers to understand what that chain of communication would be once they notice what those things are. So that is something that we would establish as guidelines. If we're back to virtual or hybrid, you know, those wellness checks of, of what the absences are and what, how, how many hits that threshold. The SEL considerations for staff are similar. You know, this is, this has been somewhat of a traumatic situation for a lot of people, providing opportunities for staff to have those. providing opportunities for staff to have those reopening concerns addressed, facilitating discussions, whether that's before school opens or maybe on that superintendent's conference day, to turn it over to the staff to give them the opportunity to work through some of those stressful situations. And of course, I mentioned the wellness resources, there would be some self-care activities and resources there for faculty and staff as well. I'm going to turn it over to Lynn, who's going to do objective three and four, and then I'll bounce back quickly for five.
Great. Thank you, Denise. Hello, everyone. So I'm going to jump right in, going into objective three. Objective three is really covering the compliance procedures for IEP 504 and ELL mandates. So as, as soon as we go back, of course, and once we know what the plan is, the most important thing is to look at every student, but more specifically our high-risk students, students that may need a little bit more attention and planning and support for transitioning, so we can see those students right away and develop transition plans for them. The next point would be to look at all of the IEPs that we created this spring and make sure that they are relevant and appropriate as we move into the fall. And depending on those different opening options, making sure that our goals are appropriate, making sure that we look at the program recommendations, we look at any accommodations we put into place, making sure that we have a procedure for reporting any changes that we may need to make. We've been hearing it a lot today, we may start off in school and very quickly have to transition to a home model, and that then would cause some changes for us in terms of accommodations and things like that. So a way that we can report those. Also considering, of course, if we should reconvene through the CSE to make those changes. Also, we talked about grouping different students. You know, at the high school level, many students could be grouped cross-grades or things like that. And when we look at a model where transitioning through the building and cohorting is really the way we're moving, we might need to look at those more critically to make sure that the groups make sense and cohorts make sense. So scheduling and grouping is something that we would need to consider. And then efficient communication systems, making sure that we have something, an example we gave would maybe be a shared document that could be accessed by all providers because we may not have some of those hallway conversations and things like that, so making sure we have very clear efficient communication systems in place. And then also for the 408 meetings, which are the meetings we do at the beginning of every school year for every student with an IEP, where we go over with the, the classroom teachers, all the important information. So just making sure that we have a way that that information can be clearly shared to all staff, you know, maybe at the high school level, it could be over a Zoom or something like that, rather than having eight or nine staff members all need to meet regularly for, you know, for a few different students. And then lastly, in that category, was the supplies and materials, really taking inventory of what we have. Of course, with IEPs, a lot of multisensory instruction is a big thing, and a lot of that requires physical manipulatives. And if we have to consider sharing and things like that, we need to look at the manipulatives that we have. Also, if we're going to be supporting home learning, we might need to look into purchasing some materials to support that. Also, one thing that we've discussed more specifically, clear masks, of course, with speech and language, or students that require lip reading or even visual cueing and things like that. That's some physical items that we might need to purchase to better support our students. Also looking into modifications for visual impaired or hearing impaired students. And those would really cover across the board. Objective four was about procedures for workplace accommodations. A lot of that we talked to, we, a lot of that we said might be regarding staff absences, or if you need to be quarantined, what might that look like? So we, of course, would then have to prepare for prolonged staff shortages for people that may have to be out for longer periods of time, increasing permanent substitutes or support staff that we know would be available for those absences and to support. Also then increasing the recruitment efforts to make sure that we have a robust substitute pool to then support all of those absences we're discussing. Another thing we've discussed was having staff being cross-trained to support each other and support colleagues. Especially with the cohorting and the grouping, there's a lot that can be done with working together. Again, also for staff that may have to be home, maybe they're being quarantined or have a family member who's quarantined and are not able to be in school, but they may still be able to contribute and have home assignments or support in just ways that are different than how we're currently working. And then establishing guidelines for time off, if again, any of those situations occur. And then the other note in that is just any environmental accommodations that may come up and that making sure that staff know the process for any work order requests and making sure all of those things that may come up through even the facilities group, things that we need to be checking, making sure staff has ways to identify and share those, any, any issues of concern there. And then also a confidential reporting system for any accommodations that any staff might personally seek. You know, maybe they want additionally, additional safeguarding measures or something like that. And then, yeah, so in the hybrid model, both would apply, and then virtually, the absences may still apply, but environmental accommodations would not be relevant.
Thanks, Lynn. Objective five is really about necessary communication for all parties, and this is really what I discussed already. The employee resource guide would include all the things that we talked about that they would need, the parent communication. We went through a little bit, and then, of course, the student information, communication systems. We talked, I mentioned how to communicate new procedures with the students, but we also talked about, I actually didn't change it on the document yet, but the Remind app or School Messenger that we are, the families are already used to using with the student cell phone, seven through 12, where they could be communicated directly with, even, even if they're in the building. The counselors maybe are used to putting passes in the mailboxes, for example, the kids come down to guidance. It could be that they send a text, you know, that you have an appointment, or you have a Zoom session with me, et cetera, ways that people can communicate directly with the students. As they continue to build their familiarity with Canvas and email, there's a sense that maybe the text would be a little bit quicker, more efficient access that the students could respond to, especially in the beginning of the year, the counselors pointed out that there's concerns in the counseling center that would, you know, that high traffic flow time, where they would be actually setting up appointments, maybe they can make their schedule changes, talk to their counselors through Zoom, et cetera. So having a system to communicate with the older students through the, through their cell technology would be, would be an important system for consideration. And then the other form of communication is all of the visible building signs, where we communicate not only to help make behavior changes for staff, but also if there should be visitors, visible signs. And again, I'm sure this is going to come more in James's group, but what those requirements are for masks, visitors, hand, you know, clearly identifying, hand washing reminders and sanitizer stations and all those things, and where they need to be placed should be considered under the communication goal. So that's it. And who do we say? James is next.
Morning, everyone. How are you? We're going to take a look at the Facilities and Transportation Advisory Group, and I'm just going to share our screen. And the first objective for the Facilities and Transportation Advisory Group, which did include Lynn Herschlein, Mike Bongino, Chuck Benvenuto, Diane Santoro, as well as Jerry Tiger, Oliver Heck custodians, and Jean Luna, a transportation coordinator. And the first objective is really to look at our building cleaning regimens, including the cleaning staff that we currently have on hand to ensure that we could address all of the, the needs and the concerns that, that will arise due to COVID-19 in September. And it's important to note, and Mr. Margulies always had mentioned this, that, that we've always been in the business of disinfecting and sanitizing, so this isn't new for us. And it doesn't really reflect changes in procedures because we've always been sanitizing our buildings and our rooms. However, given the circumstances, we, we are working to develop formal written cleaning and sanitizing procedures, which will include an easy-to-use checklist that our custodians can have and bring to each room that they go into as they do their daily cleanings. And the checklist and the procedures will make sure that every room is standard and that areas aren't missed. And then a custodian can simply go through the checklist every night and make sure all desktops have been done. There are soap and towels, you know, or in sync in the elementary level, et cetera. So this is being developed by our head custodians and our interim director of facilities. And it's going to differentiate between our daily, which we're looking at right now, as a nighttime cleaning, all of that might change based upon the schedules that were shared or the possible schedules that were shared by principals, but our nightly cleaning versus what will be required during the daytime. And during the daytime, similar to what we did in March, right before our closure, is having custodial staff cleaners available to really address the high traffic, high-touch areas such as doorknobs on the entrances on doors, bathrooms every couple hours, making sure the bathrooms are, are cleaned and sanitized and whatnot. So we're working on that, you know, for the daily cleaning, but also the daytime cleaning while we are in session. And then looking at our common areas, such as our playgrounds and such. And although the playgrounds, as you know, and, and the public parks have opened, we want to take a look at how we can best ensure the safety of our playgrounds, or if they could be used at all. In addition, we want to take a look at our building systems, and again, the Buildings and Grounds Office will take the lead with this. But our preventative maintenance, especially on our ventilation systems, and if you read the CDC guidelines, this is very important to make sure that there is proper ventilation and airflow within the building. Outside air is required to be brought into all occupied spaces to make sure that it's working. The proper outside air is being brought into the rooms, especially in our bathrooms. Each of our bathrooms does have an exhaust fan that does bring the airflow, brings the air out. We want to make sure that there is proper ventilation in there, especially in those bathrooms, which are sometimes overlooked. Making sure that our hand washing and sanitizing stations are in good working order, whether those are the the Purell stations or the hand sanitizing stations that are located in many of our elementary classrooms or at our entrances, but also making sure that our sinks work, that their soap dispensers work, that there are proper towels, so that hand washing can take place. And finally, taking a look at our water, our buildings have been closed since March, so it's important that all of our buildings be flushed. Many of our faucets and other such water devices haven't been used since the middle of March will be closed, so that'll be almost six months before we reopen, so making sure the building is properly flushed. Resources that we're taking a look at is supplies, cleaning and disinfecting supplies, and several months worth. And one of the things that we're really working to do is to be flexible, understanding there are going to be disruptions to the supply chain, as we all saw with the Clorox wipes and other such items. And really being flexible. Our main disinfectant, which is called Birex, is popularly used in many hospitals and healthcare settings. So making sure that if we can't obtain Birex, that we have other such products that, that we can use to disinfect your buildings so that we're never at a point where we don't have anything to use. And we're currently working on orders for several months worth of supply. We currently have enough to bring us through the summer cleaning, but we might have enough supply to bring us well into the fall, into late fall at least. And again, having that flexibility of product and vendors, because we know that there could be some shortages and high demand as we go on. Taking a look at new equipment, which will not only make our job faster and easier, but more effective, we're purchasing electrostatic sprayers, these are backpacks, that spray a mist of the disinfectant Birex or other such product that we may use, as well as an electrical charge. And what that electrical charge does is it causes the, the mist to adhere to surfaces more readily. This is what is used, is being used by the MTA now on the Long Line Railroad and such. This will help us in large areas such as gymnasiums and cafeterias, possibly the prep ground, but also is a, is a great product that we can use on our classrooms as a final step for sanitation. As the earlier group mentioned about masks and cleaning supplies, we already have an order that's out for cloth masks for our staff, and more will be coming. In addition to, we have hand sanitizer, alcohol-based hand sanitizer at all of our entries. It will be in all of our classrooms. And again, this is about being flexible. So right now, we may have dispensers that use Purell, but understanding that we may not be able to obtain refills at some point. So we're working on how we can use other sanitizing, hand sanitizer products in our current dispensers, even purchasing pump bottles such as this and filling it with the New York State Clean from the prisons. But we can use, and that's readily available to us, and making sure something like this is in every classroom at least. So again, it's about being flexible and having a number of options, considering, you know, the supply chain issues that we may experience and have experienced. In terms of personnel, we do need to look at our custodial personnel in general to make sure that we have enough cleaners. And they're assigned at the right time, so that really will be dictated by which schedule we're on in September. We may need to take some folks from the night staff and bring them forward during the day to do those high-traffic and touch areas. Now, this could be accommodated because we're in a situation such as this in September, there are not going to be most likely large events or any events after the school day at the high school. So we would have staff that is responsible for those, those kind of event setups and such that we can reassign, or that we're assigned to athletics that could be reassigned. We may need to bring in temporary employees like we did in March, and we brought in custodial substitutes just to help out during the day with those high-touch areas, or even a contract for services with a vendor to help us out with that. Our next objective is just taking a look at the physical space, and this again was mentioned by both the principals in the last group. How many students and, and staff members can we fit in a room if we're required to provide the safe distancing, which has been at the CDC recommended to be six feet at this point? And there are a number of options that, that the groups went through with regard to, there would be no reduction in classroom occupancy, and that would mean that there would be less than six feet between student desks and the, and the teacher, and masks would need to be worn. We'd need to use some kind of cohort model, again, which was mentioned earlier, whereby the same group of individuals stay together throughout the day and don't really mix with other groups. We need to look at the primary students as well, and this really goes back to this Campbell's Committee with regard to masks and can the primary students, are they able to wear masks or some other type of PPE device due to their age, or are they too young to be able to keep that on for extended periods of time? The next option is, is mentioned, is using every available space for instruction in the classroom. And that's something to, to look at as well, whereby we're using music rooms and art rooms and whatnot, all for core instruction, again, as the principals earlier identified. With regard to the action plan, so what we've already done and are actually completing is creating building floor plans. Each of our custodians created a building floor plan of their particular building and has shared that with me and their principal, indicating the maximum occupancy of each room, if we needed to really accommodate that six-foot safe distancing. And what we're seeing, and it depends on the building, here at Goose Hill, it's probably more so like nine students, and, and the other elementaries and the high schools probably ranging between 11 and 13 students, depending on the size of the room, but we'll say more than 12 for the purpose of the discussion, that no more than 12 students could be in a room if we were to mandate the safe distancing. At the high school level and even at Lloyd Harbor and West Side, if it were 12, some of our classes are 28, so that could create a unique problem for us as we, even if we cut in half, we would not be able to accommodate that. While this meeting was going on, you know, a vendor stopped by with something that the committee's looking at, and they're clear plastic study carols that can go, actually be Velcroed onto the student desk that would provide a sort of sneeze and cough guard. And that is an option that some districts are considering, if that safe distance can't be maintained, is putting on each one of the desks in the room that clear Lexan, it's a less flammable polycarbonate plastic, whereby it provides additional protection. So a vendor had just stopped by to show me a prototype of that, so we're taking a look at something like that, that can go on the actual desk. A novel idea came up this weekend, could we get like a plastic that can kind of fold? And the students, like at this junior senior high, can carry that with them, and they'd have their own desk guard that they can bring to their classes or leave on their desk. So we're looking at different items such as that. One of the concerns that we do have is lead time and availability. And so we're looking at that, we talked about, and it's on the list here, taking an inventory of our furniture, and perhaps we would need to order some furniture for Goose Hill or some of our other buildings, if we were to be in every possible space at full capacity. It takes several weeks to order furniture in a regular year, and considering the demand this year and the demand of plastic and whatnot, this is something we're, we're just staying in tune with and talking to our vendors almost on a daily basis. This is mentioned earlier, we're looking at traffic flow and one-way hallways, distance markers, et cetera. Modes of entry, we, you know, because of our security plan, everybody enters the building through one entrance. We may need to suspend or modify that whereby, folks, there are several designated entrances for people to enter, thereby not having some kind of bottleneck with, you know, too many people at one place at one time. I mentioned the barriers for the security desks, clerical workspaces, staff offices, or student desks, et cetera. And we're continuing to look at all those items. In terms of resources needed, if we are to clear things out in halves, that's safe distancing, we're going to need a place for the stuff, for all of the things that are currently in the classroom, especially at elementary and primary levels, the bookcases, the playsets, et cetera. If that all needs to be cleared out, we need a place to store that, so we'll need to look at areas in the building as well as possible rentals of storage containers, at least temporarily, to put those bookcases and other such things in there to make that space in the classrooms. Mentioned the furniture, some of our newer furniture or collaborative furniture does not lend itself to distancing, so there may be a need for additional desks and chairs so that we can provide that separation. Again, we do need to be concerned about not only costs, but lead time and availability for these kind of items. I mentioned this, the cough sneeze guards, again, we need to think about lead time and cost. One of the, you know, one of the items I looked at is $115. If we bought one for every student, we'd spend $200,000. It may be a necessary expenditure, but that's something that we definitely need to plan for. And signage, thanks to some of our athletic vendors, we've already got in the Thanks to some of our athletic vendors, we've already gotten some prototypes for signage, reminding our Seahawks to wear their masks, say six feet apart. Visitors make must make calls first. So there'll be ample signage on the floors, on the walls. Really, you know, those removable decals that we can put down. So we are all looking at that as well. And we're making orders now because we know that we'll need that stuff in September. The next is, I would say, the most complicated of the objectives, and that's student transportation. And how do we safely transport our students to school? The state of California issued some guidance last week with regard to the reopening of schools. And I immediately jumped to the transportation section to see what the recommendations were. And it said, this, this item really needs a lot more discussion. Because it's inherently complex and there are issues that we, I'm not sure can be overcome. The recommendation is a six feet distance on the bus. However, that creates a whole host of logistical problems for us. So what does that mean? If we were to have six feet distancing on the bus, on a large bus, Huntington Coach or a vendor estimates will have 11 students on a bus. And on a van, on a mini bus, that would be four students per bus. Now, if there are families, let's say the siblings going to the same school, they can sit together. So that would increase the occupancy on the bus. Let's say there are three siblings going to West Side, they can all sit on the same bench on the school bus. So therefore, instead of 11, you would be at 13 with the two additional students. That will take a lot of planning to look at who's together and who's not, and where seats would be assigned. One of the more popular ideas, the things that we're looking at is staggering school start times. We use about 20 large buses. And they are for differing amounts of time, but we do have 20 large buses in our contract. And we could extend the time for all of those buses and use all 20 buses to transport for each of our schools, Goose Hill, Lloyd Harbor and West Side. That would help us meet more of the distancing requirements. What it would require though is a staggered school time and almost 45 minutes between schools. So let's say that Goose Hill began at eight. And then we'll say West Side would begin at 8:45 and then Lloyd Harbor would begin at 9:30. Due to the differences in our school day between the secondary school and the elementary school. We would need to make some modifications to the length of the day because we would have a transportation issue on the other end in the afternoon, because the elementary day is shorter than the high school. So we would need to look at that. But if we staggered the school day, we can use all 20 buses to transport those, those schools one at a time and therefore providing more distance. That would mean that we would not be able to use, and if we do need to provide the distancing, we will not be able to have van transportation at Goose Hill. We'll need to use the large buses. Which is totally fine and appropriate for children of those ages. Most school districts do use large buses to transport students in kindergarten, first grade. However, we also need to change from door to door transportation because especially on the neck, our large buses will not be able to get down many of the roads that they do travel to pick up students at that level. Therefore, we would need to establish bus stops. Which would lessen the ride time and and the amount of time it would take to transport, but that would be a significant change for our population at Goose Hill with the large buses as well as the bus stops. One of the items that's mentioned are maybe curtains or plastic on the bus, plastic between the seats, or even like a vinyl plastic curtain. And that would really need to be determined by the Department of Transportation, the State Department of Transportation, if that is safe. We are waiting on guidance from them. And hope to have that soon. And again, as a reminder, and as I remind my colleagues, all 700 of us are in the same place. We're all required to provide transportation. And we all have the same exact issues with regard to this. So we will be monitoring what's happening at the state level. Are there modifications that can be made to the school bus that which would allow us to increase the occupancy? It's important to note that Cold Spring Harbor does not own its own bus fleet. And therefore, we need to work and have the permission and and really work together with the contractor to make this happen. And then we questions, who pays for the modifications? Are the modifications permanent? Do they damage the bus? And where do we go from here? But most importantly, when we talk about this and try to plan, we really felt that it's important to put out a survey to parents and sooner than later about who would be using and who would be comfortable using transportation and bus service in September. And this would allow us to determine how many students we will need to plan for. We're expecting many more parents will choose at least at first to drive their students to school and thereby not use transportation, which would lessen the occupancy on the bus. So at some point, we're hoping during the month of July, that this survey can go out so we can know how many students, how many families are planning to use our bus. And then we can start rerouting our buses to accommodate the guidelines that that are put out. So as you look at the resources needed, there would be additional drivers and vehicles possibly. And this would be offset by changes, the possibility of not using van transportation. Money to retrofit buses with the protective equipment if that's permitted. An additional security staff to accommodate a much higher traffic flow for parent drop off and pickup. And do we need to make changes about where that happens? Thereby eliminating, you know, bottlenecks on property and also off the property. Do we need to change where drop off and pickup will happen? And whatnot. And we'll definitely need more staff to help direct traffic to accommodate what we, we definitely expect to be a larger flow. Obviously, the virtual columns are blank because there would be no need for transportation if we were not in the school buildings. And finally, objective four looks at the school lunch program and how we can continue to operate the program. And then one of the options mentioned by the the elementary principals, if there were to be a split day, then there would not be a need for lunch program, but all the other options do call for one. And and really, we looked at meal pre-ordering and payment whereby the night before a parent would go online and would a parent or child would go online and and place an order for the next day. So we know exactly who is going to be purchasing lunch that following day. The meals would be prepared at the elementary level, they can be placed on a cart. All of the accounts can be charged. There would be no need for any interaction in that cart with the prepared meals and to go packaging with to go utensils that are wrapped could be wheeled down to the classrooms. If it were to be in the elementary school and the classrooms, or if they're rotating the cafeteria or where it would be. We'd use a little bit of more of a simplified menu. But we feel this would work really well. At the junior senior high school, we do the same thing with the pre-ordering, but we would have a have to have a pickup station to be identified where students can can pick up their meals. And that would really be dependent on where that lunch would occur. Our three cafeterias at the junior senior high school could accommodate about 90 students if we were to do safe distancing. So it depends on the model. If we're at half capacity, that would work. If we weren't, obviously, that would not work. But we would have lunch pickup somewhere close to that area with proper precautions and spacing. We would also talk about eliminating food deliveries by parents and others at the buildings. We no longer allow private food deliveries, but we do experience, especially at the junior senior high, a lot of food and other such item deliveries, which we would eliminate next year, considering the need to keep a number of people coming to the building as low as possible. Resources needed, as I mentioned, it's go packaging utensils. We're already along the way with that. We have the capability to be completely cashless and the ordering system can be done through our POS system, which we're looking at right now. Or even a simple Google form that we can, you know, put together right away. Protective barriers for the lunch line or the areas whereby students may come in contact to pick up their meals, really at the junior senior high school. This is a little bit of a funny one. If we're going to have lunch in the classroom, not only do we need to make sure that there's proper garbage cans and cleaning, but no smelly foods either. Taco Tuesday may need to be suspended if we're doing lunch in the classroom. Because it was shared with by one of the teachers in our committee, you know, you smell Taco Tuesday for the rest of the day. When that happens. There may be a need for additional monitors if we're in the classrooms or whatnot. Because there will need to be supervision provided to the students. And something from a budgetary standpoint. No matter what option we do, no matter what the opening is next year, we expect somewhat of a temporary reduction in the participation in the program, which will mean reduced revenue. Also reduce à la carte items, which helps keep the program afloat. So we do need to be prepared for taking another loss in the program next year. There's not much that we can do about that, but just to be prepared that we should see a significant decrease in in the funds with regard to school lunch next year. And those are our four objectives. So at this point, I will turn it over to Mr. Simon, who could talk about his instruction advisory group.
Thank you, Mr. Stuccio. Okay, so good morning, everyone. As you can see, the way I've sort of broken down the information on the screen is an elementary and a secondary group, because we actually have, our advisory group is actually broken down into two smaller subgroups to focus on K six and the focus on the junior senior high school. Thank you to everyone who's participated so far. Dr. Bolin and Mr. Calucci are here from the secondary group and Mrs. Zood and Mr. Shirello are also on the call this morning from the elementary group. And we look at the first objective, it's really about, this is really a biggie. It's really about reviewing the K 12 scope and sequence and thinking about the adjustments that we need to make, what assessments we need to give. And what I've tried to do is, as we go through a lot of the conversations as the the advisory groups each meet separately once a week, some similar trends come up. There are certain things that come up that are just high school issues, some are just elementary. But where I could, I tried to line them up for you so you could see the the similar conversations, you know, right off the bat. And again, you know, our our goal is really to create a seamless flow between a traditional, a hybrid and a completely online environment. As, as you know, Mr. Fenter said in the very beginning, you could start out in one and very quickly move into another. And so that'll be part of our work because we don't want our students, we don't want our families, we don't want our teachers to feel like they're making this huge adjustment once something changes. So you're going to see that flow throughout, right off the bat. Setting kids up at the elementary level with with Google Classroom and the, you know, the high schools certainly more prepared to to set up with Canvas. They've been living that for a couple of years. Our our teachers know Google Classroom now. But part of that is really to streamline how we post. We think it'll make it easier for parents, certainly easier for kids. Thinking about how we get our information from our students. You know, we've done on demand writing through our TC reading and writing program. And this will be a way to get a baseline from our students in the beginning of the year. One thing you heard from Ms. Campbell is just thinking about how we open the school year. And it's interesting that she spoke about that because our advisory groups were talking about, maybe we we give us a sort of modified version of these sort of on demands. They are, in a sense, an assessment. But so more of a way of getting to know the kids and through their writing, telling us about their experience, telling us something they're an expert in. Will allow them to sort of share more about them and and let our teachers get a sense of who they are as a writer. Now, again, if this we start online, some of this work will obviously have to be done at home and communicating to the parents, the importance of of these types of assessments will be critical. There are, you know, BOCs around the state are putting together some assessments that are aligned to the standards that we could use that are short. At the elementary level, we always give Fountains and Pennell assessments to our students in the beginning of the year. Typically, that happens more around the October range. We want to front load that, start that, you know, in the very beginning, that will help to inform the guided reading work we can do through the year. We're looking at different resources and tools online. Newzilla is one of them where there are, where we are able to level set and get a sense of who students are as readers that would able to support us in reading at home and getting feedback. The great thing about this is it aligns to our curriculum, it's K to 12. So a lot of bonuses to that. At the high school level, Dr. Bolin, after our first meeting in, you know, sort of connection with our with our teachers and other members of the advisory group, sent down an assessment survey to the teachers of high school to get a sense of what really worked best. When assessing students online, and we got an array of responses, but there were some overlapping, there were some threads and themes throughout that. You know, sometimes the assessments are a little bit harder to grade, you know, can give you a lot of really good feedback. And so that I'll speak a little bit more in the other objective when we talk about PD. You know, when we talk about assessments, especially at the elementary level. You know, we really have to think about what is most important to get from our students in the beginning of the year, because if you think, you know, they not only have they been out of school for a long time, but the summer is almost three months. But we also have to be very careful and all the people of our advisory group have spoken about the fact that we don't want to overload our students with assessments. So this is some of the work we're still fleshing out. Which ones are most important to give now? Which ones can we hold off on to ensure a smooth transition back to school where students are not overloaded with assessments? As we continue thinking about next year. We think about our, you know, our units of study through TC. One of the things that, since we are a project school, they have worked with Heinemann to post lessons online. We've talked about this throughout the year, you know, in the sense of we want to have instructional videos ready. Should we go completely online? Should we need to to lean on those in some sort of hybrid model? However, it is, it'll be part of our summer work to look at those different lessons because they are created by staff developers, professionals from Teachers College. And to have those in the bank, ready to go, should we shift very quickly to online? We'll certainly be able to support our reading program and writing program that goes through the middle school up through eighth grade. So our teachers need to become familiar with those, the online platform, they are familiar with, but these are really brand new that just recently came out. And since we will continue with the project next year, we will have access to this. But as our teachers participate in summer work, it's going to take time to review what else is there and how they can use those videos. One of the biggies is really reviewing, reviewing our courses at the high school, reviewing our units at the elementary school for a variety of reasons. We really need to look at prioritizing the standards, what's most important to hit. What are those key teaching points, concepts and skills in each one of those units? Because we have to be laser focused. Should we have to make an adjustment? You know, at the high school level, they talked a little bit about maybe finding those checkpoints along the way, you know, assessment is a difficult thing if you're moving to an online model. So that is something that we're going to look at. Also thinking about, and I'll talk a little bit more in objective three about the resources that we have. What are those anchor resources that we're going to use that will be embedded that we all agree are best for kids? Because we want to create as much consistency as possible, you know, one of the benefits of of being in Cold Spring Harbor are the amount of resources and online tools that students have. But by the same token, we need to make sure that we have some sort of agreement. So there's more consistency as we flow through a traditional model, a hybrid or an online model. So that will be a bulk of our curriculum work, unpacking those units, looking at those to make those adjustments and to, you know, ensure that should we shift to another model? We have everything that we need to ensure a seamless transition. So that will take up a lot of our work over the summer. At the secondary level, you know, Dr. Bolin talked a little bit about block scheduling. And so part of the work that would need to be done in, you know, our summer curriculum writing is thinking about the project based learning activities that could support that. Because it's not really about moving from, let's say, a 40 minute lesson and just making a 60 minute lesson. How can you utilize the time most effectively and give students and performance based tasks that you could get feedback on? So that will be something we have to address over the summer. At the elementary level, an articulation form went out from the task force that was created by the directors and reviewed by everybody. And it really was about getting feedback that can, you know, help enhance the summer curriculum writing that we do. What are the, you know, especially at the youngest level, what are some of those gaps that we are expecting? And we are aware of the units that we shifted to support online learning from March to June. But getting that feedback from the teachers was critical. And of course, at the elementary level, you know, project based learning is something that we always want to look at to increase, you know, hands on learning with our students. But how do you do it, you know, in the classroom and how you do it at home is, you know, two totally different things, but we have to find a way to make them one. You heard a little bit earlier about just that idea of having manipulatives at home. What, what are the things that that those tools that kids might need at home that aren't an online resource? So we have to identify those in our curriculum writing. At the elementary level, we also looked at specials and encore. You know, we're talking a little bit about how interdisciplinary work can support this movement. You know, in the sense that regardless of, you know, moving to hybrid or online and even in a traditional sense. Understanding what the units of study, what are, you know, calendar is for reading, writing, social studies, et cetera, for those core subjects. How can our specials and encore support that? And so with the support of our directors, we've been looking, revisiting what that calendar is. Where are we in the middle of October? And how can, you know, how can art or music, et cetera, plus support those units in a deeper, more meaningful way? And I think that, and we know it's best practice, but also students are working from home. It's sort of, it's more of a cohesive learning experience for our kids. And even thinking about that interdisciplinary work, as we talked about at the middle level, could also help maximize the time, especially in a block schedule. So that really is objective one. It really is about the assessment process and really the summer curriculum work that needs to go in while our kids are not in school to be prepared for when they come back, ready to roll out, should we be in a traditional hybrid or online model? Our second objective is really about the professional development that is going to support that work. So again, elementary and secondary, reviewing the needs assessment, we got a sense, we're getting a sense from our teachers on where they could be best supported So again, elementary and secondary, reviewing the needs assessment, we got a sense, we're getting a sense from our teachers on where they could be best supported. If, when we run a multi-day summer institute, when Joe's team runs workshops, you know, in the summer. Professional development during the school year. Getting that feedback from the teachers will help give us a laser focus on what their needs are. We talked also in both groups about front-loading PD, to ensure that we're ready when we come back. You know, I underline everyone because we will have, you know, we always have good participation in professional development over the summer. But the reality is, is we won't get to everybody. And so we want to think about the resources, the pedagogy that we want to address when we come back. One of the examples of was, which is a specific example that came from our secondary meeting is maybe taking the two delayed openings that we use, in early November and, in February and maybe putting them together and doing it on the eighth as a way to get everyone together for another full day of PD. Just out of the box, thinking to meet the needs of our teachers to better support our students when they come in. A virtual learning block. One of the, one of the issues we ran into this year that Ms. Hazut talked a little bit about earlier on was, you know, the idea of having a master's schedule will really help us in a variety of ways. One of those ways is really going to be with PD. Because we were working to create these different schedules in different phases throughout the year. Sometimes, for example, in grade levels, you may have teachers at Lloyd Harbor who are teaching, let's just say from ten to eleven. But the Westside teachers are free and then vice versa. Having this master's schedule will allow to get the teachers who need to be together by grade level or department at the same time. And so, you know, our feeling, especially if we are in some sort of hybrid or online model, can we find time, whether it's once a week, every other week? I have a feeling you might hear this from, from the technology group too, is embedded so that either every, every Tuesday at twelve o'clock, I know I have an opportunity. Should I want to get a little bit more PD on a new resource we have like iExcel? Or, you know, just a more Google Classroom training, whatever it might be. So that, that was very important to the group. As you can see, project-based learning as a tool and strategy to support block scheduling would be embedded there. And as you can see below that, we have a list that we're starting to generate based on the needs assessment that the professional development committee just gave out. Based on the feedback from the teachers and leaders in the advisory group. And if you look at them, they are very similar, whether it's about looking at projects and revising them. Supporting parents is a biggie, teachers want support. How do I support my parents of the kids in my classes in an online environment? How do we increase student engagement? In the classroom, when you're right there with the learner, it's one thing. When you're working with them on Zoom, it's totally different. The SEL piece came up that I, I know that Ms. Campbell spoke about, it came up in our group. There are some big tools that we all use, CAMs, Google Classroom, Kami and Nearpod. These are biggies that, that teachers want a little bit more support with. And I won't read them all to you, but as you go through, you can just see assess students online. You know, how do we create authentic assessments for our students? Ones that really are differentiated and give us really good feedback. How do we, you know, if we were to give, you know, I spoke earlier in objective one about giving the FMP assessments. What does it look like online? How do I do that? How do I, how do I run a guided reading group? We know that we have staff developers that can support us. We know that we have internal people who can support us. We know that Heinemann, the company that we purchased the guided reading materials from, has created all these great online resources. But how do we run that? How do we do that small group work and how do we do it better? So these are just a range of opportunities that our, our teachers are saying we want. Our, our needs assessment has identified and our advisory groups are saying, this is the PD that teachers are going to need. They're going to need some of it over the summer that we're prepared to deliver. They're going to need some of it in the beginning of the year and then embedded ongoing throughout the year. And then the one thing I'll just add at the end is just on the bottom left or in the middle of the screen, the encore. Just, just sort of looking at how do I, how do we support our special area teachers at the elementary level? Certainly all of these would apply, but that idea of trying to go more project-based, trying to create more collaborative projects with the homeroom teachers. As PD that I think will go a long way, that our teachers will want and will support our students learning moving forward. Again, regardless of which mode we're in, but certainly should we move to a hybrid model? Objective three, standardizing the resources. I talked about in the first objective about these, sort of having these anchor resources. Again, we're blessed in Coast Guard Harbor to have so many of them. But we really need to take a look to see which are, you know, the major players that we want to focus on by department, by grade level. So we need to spend some time reviewing those resources. As I mentioned, you know, while some of our groups and advisory groups will overlap, some of the objectives with, and I believe overlap. So looking at those resources and identifying the ones that need probably need that front-loading in PD. So those teachers feel confident starting the year. And again, that's regardless of the model. You know, categorizing them is a big deal because we have so many that we want to, we want to give teachers a sense of, you know, what, what are those that can support? Independent practice on a computer at home. You know, as we talked about, there may be some independent practice if we want a hybrid model, maybe give a little independent practice at home where we get feedback. So that's huge. You know, the other piece that, that was added to this, especially the secondary level is just thinking about the expectations for the use of these. Attendance is one, because one of the ones that we use, especially when we're online is, is Zoom. And it's difficult for our teachers when there's a student who's online, but you can't, you, all you see is a picture or a name. You don't know if the, if the student's there. So it's hard to monitor engagement that way. So we really want to look at this and see how we can utilize, you know, clear set expectations. Discussion boards is something that came up when thinking about what are our expectations? To, you know, set a regular use of discussion boards. Why? Well, we know that if we're, we're online, it'll support student voice. And empower students to share their thinking. But also, you know, our teachers recognized, you know, certainly that they noticed that there were some reluctant learners who in a traditional setting were, were, nervous about raising his or her hand. And discussion boards, sometimes they come a little bit more to life. So we got to remember to use this in a traditional model, get kids accustomed to it. But what we talked about is we really need to be clear about, is it one time per week? Is it, is it twice every, every two weeks, three times every two weeks, whatever that might be? Because we don't want to go down a road where we say we should use them regularly, because that may stifle, you know, the plan in the sense of, you know, you get some who use it a lot and some who don't use it at all. So we do have some, have some sort of basic set of expectations. But discussion board is really a great way to continue that collaborative work that we do use in a traditional setting. Again, you can see the expectations of resources. Again, while we have a plethora of these, we do have to think about, maybe creating charts by department, by grade level. And, and sort of consider, you know, the consistency for which we use them. Think about, you know, how we are going to use these to get feedback. And also just again, think about the student and parent in mind to, to give them a very cohesive, consistent, and seamless transition as they move from one to the other. We want them to go home. You know, if we move from traditional straight to online, we want them to say, okay, these are the resources we're using. We already know how to log in, we know how to use them and move from there. Consistency with streamline, streamline the way we post the canvas and Google Classroom spoke about. And then, you know, one of the conversations that came up, especially at the secondary level is really the use of, you know, does this information go into our handbooks? Do we, how often do we review this with students? We do feel it should be regular, because, you know, we, students have to know what our expectations are. And so we feel if we, if it's in the handbook, if we can review it early in the year and often, we feel like everyone will really be on the same page as it relates to what those expectations are. You'll notice I'm jumping to objective five, because objective four was the scheduling piece and our principals have really taken that over. So the last objective for our group is really the opportunity for parents and guardians to support their children through the educational process. So again, you can see the similarities. One is really a parent survey. We need to get something out, we want to get something out, we will get something out to the parents to get feedback. As it relates to digital learning and really with a lens of what next year could look like. You know, you, you heard from Mr. Stuccio that he needs to ask about transportation. So it, the parent voice in all of this is critical. So we're working on that. It's come up in our elementary advisory group, our secondary advisory group. We will continue to look at that and plan for something to go out to our Coast Guard Harbor community. Establishing a parent university. This is key. Our, our, our teachers need PD, our kids may need a little, a little bit of PD, but our parents, our, our community needs PD as well. And that could take a, a number of different forms. It could take the form of, we run workshops that you could sign up for, we run them through Zoom if we need to. We've also, also talked a little bit about creating videos and having a bank of these different videos for parents. They could learn about, you know, how do you pick out a Just Write book for your child? Just as an example, you know, it was shared in one of our advisory groups that there are districts who have created YouTube pages. So there's all these different ways for us to support parents. And one of those, if you look right below, it's really our district website, really doing a wholesale review of what's on our district website. And, and adding these, these professional development opportunities for parents there. So we will take a look at that. It will be part of our summer work to ensure that they feel like they can access information in a very quick way. And they can get the support that they need, whether it's synchronous or asynchronous. And keeping parents informed is another thing that we need to look at. It'll be part of our summer work and identifying, you know, you know, think of at the elementary level, the, the writing celebration. So we need to find a way to celebrate our work, but we also need to use that as a way to inform parents of the work that we're doing. So they are, feel a little bit more in the know about the learning process. Some of that will have to do with why we're doing things a certain way, because it is online or hybrid. And just to allow them to understand the meaning behind the work that their kids are involved in, even if they're in a traditional setting. And one example is really just the creation of a back-to-school night videos. We need to think about, that comes up very quickly and we need to make sure that we're ready. Should we be in some sort of online mode of communicating what our plans are? Should we shift? And having those ready to inform our parents with a consistent message by department and by grade levels. And that, I will just add something I already spoke about, it's, it's come up in a couple of different of the objectives. It's just universal guidelines and the expectations for students if we are online. These are the expectations. I talked a little bit about the handbook at secondary level. But it is, it is, it is critical. I think it'll help everybody, teachers, leaders, parents and students as we move forward. Mr. Fenter, actually, Mr. Mastaro, I'm going to stop my screen share and turn it over to you. Thank you, everyone.
Everybody see my screen? Very good. And as we come on two hours, let's take a fifteen minute, fifteen second SEL stretch break. Get the brain going. It's been two hours sitting down. I'm going to stretch for a couple of seconds. Get that going. Okay, there we go. So as you could imagine, technology is really a subgroup of all the groups here that are presented so far. We've been taking notes and knowing that a lot of the work that we have to do or will be doing, will come from some of the suggestions and plans that come from the previous think components that already have come forward. We have up here, the goal is to make sure we have the proper technology for all the students, staff and parents. Regardless of the mode of education that we're in, knowing that we could change any moment, to, from a fully in school to a hybrid, to being home, being best prepared to tackle whatever comes of us. And you can see in the group here, here is our group members, Ms. Beach, Ms. Dr. Passion, Ms. Cuculo, Ms. Steel, Ms. Freiberg, Ms. Massimo, Ms. Mistracchio and Ms. Terry. Our first, objective is to establish guidelines for, for effective use of video conferencing tools like Zoom, Google Meet, or whatever is being utilized by the staff. There are a lot, a lot of things out there that we have used, but setting up basically how everyone should operate. We're working on about three documents right now, one for staff, one probably for K six students and one for seven through twelve students. Knowing our students are going to be very different about the involvement of parents, obviously a kindergarten and a first grader. The parent is tremendously involved in any type of home education that goes on. If you think about it, it is possible that we will have kindergartners at the first day of school will be virtual on an iPad. So obviously there's going to be training for the students, there's going to be training for the staff, there's going to be training for the parents. What we have here are a couple of examples of some of the things that we need to prepare. Like if you're having nine o'clock Zoom, that doesn't mean you go looking for your Zoom code, your materials at nine AM. Those of you who are doing some Zoom codes this weekend for Father's Day, you probably have family members who are emailing you ten minutes into the Zoom. Where is a code? I know I did. So setting up before, making sure people are prepared, making sure students know that and parents know that. Also having schedules built out. Making sure one Zoom for a class doesn't end at ten o'clock and that next Zoom doesn't start for the student at ten oh one. They need time to go to the bathroom, as do our staff members. So here are some of the suggestions we had that we're working on. We also put together a much more robust, taking here, a plan that we're working on with some ideas. For instance, Zoom codes being very consistent where they're posted across the board. So every student doesn't get their information from, at a different location, how invitations occur. Again, being ready before the meeting starts. And right now we're at twenty-four suggestions. We're continuing to work on this. Obviously it would depend upon the grade level. There may be some very specific for certain courses. For Dr. C here who teaches chemistry, there may be some things that are going to be different than Ms. Cuculo's kindergarten class. But these are these general outlined, general procedures for how people are going to operate. For instance, making sure that you keep your camera on during the meeting. This way the teacher knows you're engaged. Speak when appropriate, keep your microphone off when you're not participating. You can imagine having twenty-five or twenty-six students in a Zoom can be very loud. If you have multiple Zooms going on in a, in a house, making sure that each location is separated, that the doors close, that there aren't pets in a room. I'm sure we've all had that dog come into a Zoom meeting and it starts barking quite loudly. It's cute for a while, but too many times it disrupts the class. So these were basic outlines on how we need to prepare and have a Zoom. Next, ensuring that staff and students provided with appropriate devices for teaching and learning. As was discussed earlier, having these resource bags that only for staff, but students. You know, when we went out, we initially thought we may be out for about two weeks and some resources were left in the classroom. There were some things we need to teach the students, especially at the younger age, that are very tactile. So developing these type of bags, some will overlap, some will be very great specific. But working on these, not only within a group, but obviously we need to reach out to staff across all the buildings to see what's necessary. If students are home, making sure that they have access to these resources. If it, this was brought up before, if teachers are in quarantine, can they teach remotely? Even if we're in session, the teacher's feeling fine, but they're in quarantine. Can they teach from home to students within the building? Setting up those procedures, how that'll operate. Then if we're in some sort of split session, teachers are in the classroom, half the students are in the class, half are not. How do we prepare for that? What are the resources that we need? Staff devices, all staff at the elementary school received a brand-new Chromebook this year. Teaching staff at the elementary, at the secondary building will receive, should be high school. We'll see if a new Chromebook at the end of summer or beginning of the school year, depending upon when they come in. Some teachers expressed the need for a larger monitor. As some of their eyes get a little bit older, it's, it's tough to see some of the smaller finds. We just had some adapters come in and we'll test them out and see how they operate. I think that will be very successful. Student devices, we were very fortunate during the, the closure, all our students, seven through twelve, already had their own Chromebook. We'll continue with that, obviously, students K through twelve, we had enough devices for all students to, to have something if they needed. We did a loaning device where we did that three times during the shutdown, where we had staff, excuse me, parents come up and pick up devices if they needed. And obviously during interim time period, if something was broken, they needed, they were able to obtain something. Where K one use iPads, two through six Chromebooks. We're looking on day one, six through twelve to be one-to-one where they have their device, take home, in school, wherever. But also be prepared if we realize that we may be shut down come on a Monday. But also be prepared if we realize that we may be shut down, come on a Monday, that Friday, students K through five take a device home. So they're able to start with digital learning right away, that we don't need to have a setup time. So we're preparing how we do our inventory, how we label everything to easily administer and get to students in a very quick way. We actually already ordered headsets for all the students K through six. They'll plug in with a headset and a microphone built in. They're actually arriving today. We're working on labeling them so every student has that come the beginning of the school year. Also the use of a stylus, an individual stylus for each student, whether they're in school or at home. So again, to keep each of the devices, everything that they touch separate as, as possible. Next, identify new and existing program software and websites. We have lots of resources that we use right now. Mr. Simon discusses with his group. We want to continue to use those resources, but make sure everybody knows what those resources are. And if they need access to those resources, provide a simple way for them to get to those resources. So we developed a little Google form for them here that asks some very simple questions, their name, the name of the software they want access to, the web address to it. If it's something we already have, that's all they need to fill out and we get them that resource. If it's something that we don't already have, give a little description of it. Is there a free trial so we can take a look at it? How will they use a product? Will others be using it? Any other information? And we'll talk about the add to class link in a moment. And then this information we filter through to proper people, whether it's a department chairperson, building principals, whoever, to see if this is something we want to use. You're going to look at most of the stuff we're discussing here, we want to be universal. These are options that we use whether we're in school, in a hybrid or completely at home. We don't want to be swapping between all these different programs depending upon the scenario. It's only going to cause confusion. Yes, there might be something very special if we're completely in a, in a, in a home education model, but most of the resources should be used regardless of that. So we'll be definitely looking to make sure we could streamline that. I mentioned the use of Classic, Class Link is a program we've subscribed to and we're working on building right now. Classic will allow every teacher, staff member and student to have a page by building or subject or grade level that has the resources that they're going to have access to. What they'll do is they'll enter in their password one time and then they will have direct linkage to that program. It's a couple of things. Out of sight, out of mind, people forget to use certain resources. Secondly, this is a simple way, especially for younger students to realize, oh yes, I could go to my Google Classroom from here. I could go to Canvas, I could go to whatever resource that I need to do to learn best that my teacher's assigning and it's very quick. We're working on this as a test. I made a folder. You can simply click on Canvas and this takes the students directly into Canvas. There's nothing more to do. So it makes it very easy for students to access all the resources that they're working And also we're working in a, in a new landscape. New York State is rolling out something called NLY2D compliance. All this basically boils down to is software that we share information with that has students or staff personal information is what do they do with it? That they can't share it out for advertising, that if there is a data breach, how will they inform us? What will they do with that? Procedures for us if there's a data breach on one of these sites. And all companies that we purchase software or website access will have to sign off on this legislation. There are some that seemingly right now do not want to. We will not be able to use those programs. That simply will be the law. Hopefully they will realize that all of New York State is going for that and that's a very large contingency of, of schools and districts who want to use their products, that they will indeed come on board and realize that this isn't anything really difficult. This is making sure you're protecting student data as we have all along, that they, that they follow along with that too. Just do know any software we purchased through BOSI's is NLY2D compliant. So we're safe on that. So there may be some softwares we're not able to utilize. Our fourth objective is to provide staff development support for the use of digital learning tools. So all stakeholders, that's our students, our staffs and our parents. We've been concentrating on student and parent needs. Kurt put out in the, in the curriculum instruction committee, put out a survey. We'll be looking at that data too. And as you can see, they're discussing this also. What types of professional development can we provide in different modes? We currently do some PD over the summer at superintendent's conference days before school starts, continuing some during the school day when school's in session, some before school and after school. Sometimes you just need someone to answer a question to move forward on. It's not a big deal. It's 30 seconds, it's a minute. You get stuck on step 12 and you can't move to 13th and 14th until you get that done. So we want to make sure that we're there. I have to say, I'm very proud of all the work that the professional developers did when we went out on break. We offered over 500 sessions in the first three weeks of being out due to COVID. And they were answering questions at all hours of the night. It was truly amazing and I'm, and I'm very proud of the work that they did and the work that the staff did in asking great questions and wanting to make sure they could use technology to the best that they can. If we're in a, in a mode where we're not in school, maybe take half days every other week. For instance, kindergarten in first grade, every Tuesday, for instance, in the morning, they're receiving professional development, answering questions, discussing with each other, there's tools that they're utilizing, building synergy amongst those buildings, amongst those staff, amongst those students for them to better learn. All different types of models for this type of professional development. Set us a time during the day, before school, after school. Right now we kind of boil down the top items for parents and students. Again, as I said before, there will be kindergartners at the first day of school, possibly will be virtual. So making sure parents know how to access Google Classroom on day one and those resources, how to use an iPad, which hope that doesn't happen, but making sure that's out there. Having Google Classrooms set up, as Kurt had mentioned earlier, on day one in these, at this grade level. Canvas, that happens already, the Canvas classrooms are set up on day one. You know, and understanding that it will take some time for students. You have some kindergartners that are four years old, starting on the iPad and they're apt at using it in certain ways and maybe not others. Use of Chromebooks, iPads, Zoom meetings, a lot of these will be taken care of with objective number one, with rules and regulations. But providing those professional developments, whether it's a live session, hopefully maybe we can even have some in-person, a live stream, tutorials, emails, whichever is appropriate. Same thing here with students. We will have seventh graders starting next year using Canvas for the first time. We had discussed doing some Canvas work with the students end of the school year before all this COVID happened, giving them their classrooms and kind of doing some visits with them to get them use over the summer to their product. Obviously that couldn't have happened the way everything ended, but we're still looking for ways for them to get some easy access just to experiment with it. And sometimes that's the best way for kids to learn is just to play around with it, get a couple of examples, become familiar with it. So on day one, it's not the first time they're seeing it. A lot of students have picked up tremendous amounts of skills in Chromebooks and iPads over the course of the shutdown. Many of their parents have marveled at how much they have learned and some of the new skills that they picked up. You know, and I'm going to look at the bright light and the, and the shining light of this, of these components. Yes, it was horrible what has happened with our students not being in school all the time, but they've learned so many skills that they will absolutely benefit from moving forward in their lives and in the business world. So we're going to use that and continue to educate them in those ways. As I said, we'll be working with the professional development committee to looking at what type of professional development we need, not only for parents and students, but also with the staff. Objective five is to review and establish protocols for communication. We have lots of communication devices out there. We use School Messenger for email blasts, phone calls, our website, a learning management systems like Canvas and Google Classroom, also e-school data as a way to communicate information to a staff. We want to make sure we kind of standardize how these communications happen. So it's not different from each building, sharing with each other to make sure that we're all sharing the same information. And also when we send out information is kind of train people not only to go to the one link where information is shared to, but where that type of information is found. Because as you can see over time, we send out lots of information. And a perfect example, especially at the elementary's level that many people familiar with, we send out a weekly flyer packet. Well, include that direct link, but also include the link to where all the packets are located. It makes it easier for parents to bookmark information if they miss an email. It's very easy to miss. We always receive lots of emails where to go to get that information, even if they missed that initial email. We have a school email system internally that students can only communicate with all the Coleman Harbor accounts. So it's a good way and a good, safe way to communicate with people. And obviously a lot of what we're going to be taking is listening. I've been taking notes during today's briefing on things that the other groups are working on, how we could incorporate that into what we're doing and how we can provide resources, provide training and provide support in that way. I know it's mentioned many times at parent survey, there's no doubt reaching out to parents to see what we could do better, because we all could always do better to make sure that it makes it easier for them. It makes sense there. Sometimes it's just clarifying and this, an understanding that it's just off for whatever reason. There's a lot going on and we want to make it easy for parents. If there's a way that we can make it easier for all of us, why not do that? And that's what we want to do is make sure we're there, the communication is there, how the communication between the district, the building, the teachers, the staff, how that operates. So we want to know what worked and what didn't and how we can make it better. And then you have our task force meeting there. So with that, I guess I'll push it back to Mr. Fenter.
Thank you, Mr. Monastero and everyone who presented the extensive and extraordinary work of our advisory groups. I think anyone who is listening to that which we shared this morning is duly impressed by the extensive work that has been done looking at different models. I think, you know, reflecting on that which was shared by our leaders and our members of our advisory groups, I think we can look back and say over the last several months that we've learned a lot. We are a learning organization and we are an organization that wants all of our students and staff and parents and as an organization to learn. I know one of our teachers, when we had had a conversation a couple of weeks ago, commented on how she could not believe how much she learned in such a short period of time about how to use technology. If you remember, our teachers, particularly at the elementary level, didn't have Google Classroom set up. So over the course of the first few weeks of being out of school, they had to set up Google Classrooms. They had to learn to record lessons. They had to learn to Zoom. It was a steep learning curve and our staff with the support of 500 plus sessions of PD, as Mr. Monastero said, people were supported in that learning, but it was a lot of work. We want to take the best of our experiences and apply them for September regardless as to the mode that we find ourselves in, in the fall. So some reflections, a theme that's happened, that's been made throughout this, this presentation has been the need for, for parent input and feedback. We have thought from the very beginning that surveys were critical of our parents to help us to plan for the fall. And so we're going to look closely over the next couple of days of how to best include our parents in this process, maybe a focus group, input on how to devise surveys and such as that and do it in a timely way. We want to hear from our parents about their willingness to send students to school on buses, because that will inform our planning in the fall as to the number of buses that we may need. How many parents are feeling very uncertain or unsure if they will return their children at all in September, if they feel that they're still a public health issue that they're concerned about? And we look for feedback on all of those we've done. So we will be certainly reaching out to our PTG leaders and asking them for their support in, in moving to that important phase as well. So where do we go from here? We are at the end of two hours of presentations. I can't thank all of the groups. I think for those who sat and listened, I think I have to thank you the most because it may have been the most challenging, but I know that we're all very committed to this work. We look for feedback over the course of the next two weeks from our board members, from, from all of those that are part of this important conversation, including our parents, as we said. We look to continue the work. As Mr. Monastero said, the work of the technology group is now going to be informed by some of the ideas that were mentioned by the other advisory groups in their report outs this morning. We have to remember that as we move forward, we have to consistently think of ourselves as being pliable, flexible and able to move from one modality to the other. And the preparation that we're doing will allow us to do that most seamlessly. So as we move forward, we will continue this work. The next meeting of our task force is scheduled for July 7th. That's a Tuesday morning at 9:00 AM. We look forward to hearing from our advisory groups at that time as to their current thinking, their plans. And at that point, as we all know, time is of the essence and we will be getting very close to the, to the times when we have to make some critical decisions about our preferred models for September. And I know that our, our Board of Education is committed as to working with our, our leaders and our staff and our, and all of our groups in helping to make those decisions moving forward. So Mr. Pelano, that brings us to the end of our agenda items for our meeting this morning. I would ask you if there's any questions that people might have or if we would like to bring the meeting to a close at this time.
Bob, I think Anthony left.
So Mr. Pelano, I will not ask you, but as the vice president of the Board of Education, Mrs. Brogan, I might ask you as well. And I did, if I didn't already, I do want to say a hearty and heartfelt thank you to everyone, both in the Zoom room, those who are meeting in the advisory groups for their commitment to this hard work. Thank you, Mrs. Brogan, sorry.
No, it's okay. If anybody has any questions.
Bob, if I can just ask all the documents for today, if they could be shared out to the entire board, because it was a lot of information to take, you know, to take into account so quickly, so I can take some time to review it from home.
Absolutely. Yep.
Sorry. And I was just going to say, I know that there quite a few people had to get off, some people that were head of some of the subcommittees. So maybe once we get the documents and review them, we will have a chance to ask questions. I have some questions too that I would like to discuss, but I, I think the people who that would be directed to are not on this anymore. So I think.
Amy, to your point, I have some questions as, I have some questions as well, but I'm happy to hold off on those until a later time.
Very good. And perhaps, perhaps the board can discuss a, another opportunity to have a further conversation about this and delve into some of the additional questions. I am certain that there are many and there's so much, so much to talk about. And we do thank you for your patience today and a lot of listening. What we did believe it was an important first step in sharing out the work that has been done.
I would want to say that, you know, also I agree that if we could review the materials because I do want to thank people. Clearly there's a tremendous amount of work that's been done and organized in a fashion that if we can take the time to look at it again outside of this meeting, it'll be even more meaningful and the questions that we might have will be more meaningful because there really was a tremendous amount of information to present it to us, I think, in a highly organized way. So thank you.
I, I would like to echo what Janice just said. Thank you to all of the presenters today and all of the participants of your, your task force groups. There's been a tremendous amount of information that has already been put together and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, so I guess at this time, I will close this meeting.
Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Brogan. Again, thank you to everybody. Please stay safe and we will see you in just a couple of weeks on July 7th at 9:00 AM. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.